Don't take anything for granted, Counselor. I am calling this meeting to order, and we are beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Counselor Harris, the salute to the flag of New Mexico, led by Counselor Ives, and the invocation, led by Counselor Villarreal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I submit the flag of the State of New Mexico to the State of Central, with a perfect friendship among the citizens of the country.
As usual, I'm going to do an unconventional invocation, a little bit about prayer. What is a prayer? Prayer doesn't only happen when we kneel or put our hands together and focus and expect things from our God or the higher powers. Thinking positive and wishing good for others is a prayer. When you hug a friend, that's a prayer. When you cook something to nourish family and friends, that's a prayer. When we send off our near and dear ones and say, "Drive safely," or "Be safe," that's a prayer. When you are helping someone in need by giving your time and energy, you are praying. When you forgive someone, that is a prayer. Prayer is a vibration, a feeling, a thought. Prayer is the voice of love, friendship, genuine relationships. Prayer is an expression of your silent being. Keep praying. Thank you. I don't know if anyone had any acknowledgements. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Beta, excused.
Excused.
Thank you. Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Ives.
Here.
Counselor Lindell.
Here.
Counselor Rivera.
I think he's excused.
Thank you. Counselor Romero-Worth.
Here.
Counselor Vehil Copley.
Here.
Counselor Villarreal.
Present.
Thank you. You do have a quorum present, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We move to item six, approval of the agenda.
Yes, if I could, Mayor and Counselors, we will be removing item number nine, excuse me, postponing to July 25th. This is the muchas gracias to the Santa Fe Fire Department Rapid Extircation Module Team. They actually got called out, I believe, on another fire, so we're going to postpone to the next meeting. Then we are going to also remove, and this is from the consent calendar, we're going to remove item K because of the weather conditions. They have improved, so we will place on the next agenda if so needed. And the last one is item number 11. This is the augmented river flow, and we are going to postpone that to August 29th.
Thank you.
Those are all of our amendments.
Very good. Thank you. So is there a motion on the agenda?
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, not voting. Motion is approved. The consent calendar. All right. In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Second.
That's a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Ives.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vehil Copley.
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. And as you noted, the presentations are -- rapid relief module team is off providing more rapid relief. I move then to item 12. Minutes. Apologies. Approval of -- thank you for being so on your game today, Counselor. I'm skipping ahead, I'm skipping ahead and missing important things. We have minutes from the City Council meeting of June 27. Yes, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several corrections.
Excellent.
So I'll start on page 12, and let's see.
Help us locate you.
Second paragraph. Okay, it says Counselor Beta asked if this contractor was involved in the tribal conversations. I believe, and others can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Counselor Beta asked if the contractor was involved in the entrata conversations.
I believe you are correct. That is how I remember it.
Okay, and then the next is on page 15. The last line, which starts with Counselor Vehil Copley, yada, yada. The last line says, "I would be content with it." I really said, "I would not be content with it." Totally different meaning.
In that case, I would say it needs to be amended.
And then on page 18, let's see, the first motion, I seem to have picked up another name. I think I have.
Which, what is your name here? Oh, wow.
Counselor Harris Vehil Copley. Is there something I don't know about?
Are you just friends? Oh, District Four. It's a District Four collision. Yes, I think that is a, perhaps a mistake. We can fix that.
Okay, and then go to page 20.
I will do that. Pulling up page 20.
And this is really picky, but as long as I'm on a roll.
Yep.
Counselor Vehil Copley, yada, yada, and then it says, "He asked to be added," so I will just say she. And that's the extent of my corrections. Thank you.
Thank you for finding those.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed signify by saying no. Those not voting, the motion carries. Actually, it doesn't, I don't believe it works that way. Gina, what's the process here? How do we, if there are amendments from the floor to the minutes that we just adopted, what do we do?
Traditionally, you say, "Are there any other amendments?"
I'm sorry.
Hold on, please.
Just hang on one sec. We will treat you fairly, but we've got to get ourselves through now.
Yeah, this is interesting, and I'm just thinking through it for a moment. It's the authority of the governing body to make the amendments and to bring them to council and make the motions, et cetera. I think, in the best case, in the appropriate scenario, a member of the public would have forwarded changes either to counselors or to the clerk's office in advance for consideration and inclusion in the packet. If something occurs during petitions from the floor that seem necessary, then I think at that point in time possibly there's, there could be a motion from someone that voted in the majority at that point in time.
To open up.
To reopen it up and make amendments. That's the best I can come up with to try and provide a solution for consideration. But I would say in the future, I would recommend that anyone other than the governing body send those type of changes to the clerk's office in advance.
Counselor Ives?
And just from the parliamentary, and I concur in what the city attorney has said, there really is no opportunity at this point in our proceedings, under our rules, for public comment on those minutes unless it's brought up by a member of the governing body. But it certainly would be possible in petitions from the floor to hear the proposed correction and then act on that at that point in time.
Okay, that seems to be the consensus, so we'll do it that way.
So shall I issue the minutes change that I am, from my petition from last, last meeting, or are you saying that you want to postpone that until 7:00?
That is what we're saying. Or alternatively, I suspect what you could do is to submit them, and somebody from the council could take it up on your behalf.
Thank you. Traditionally, I have amended minutes from my petition before, and they, there's a, you motion, "Are there any other issues concerning the minutes?" And then you listen from the constituents, and then you would vote on the motion.
Thank you. With that air having been corrected, we'll take it up as best we can. It's what they call an unforced error in tennis, so I committed one. Let's move to item, I believe, 12, unless I'm, am I better this time?
You are.
Doing better. Item number 12 on the agenda is consideration of this resolution, which extends the duration of the task force for eight months. Where are we?
Move to approve.
Second.
Could you, assuming there is no discussion, please call the roll.
Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vehil Copley?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
All right, we will move then to item 13, request to publish notice of public hearing ordinance relating to the City of Santa Fe Uniform Traffic Ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vehil Copley?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
All right, we will move then to item number 14, request for approval of the city comprehensive annual financial report fiscal year ending June 30 pursuant to state audit rule 2012 2.2.2. Yes, sir, you have words for us.
Mayor, counsel, today we have Laura Beltran Schmidt from CLA, our auditor, and she is going to present the 2017 CAFR and audit to the council tonight. So with that?
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. Thank you for allowing me to present this evening. I did place a PowerPoint presentation in front of all of you that we'll be going through this evening. I did not print a full CAFR for everyone, but I believe you should have, you should have access to it in the meeting packet electronically if you do have any further questions. So as Brad mentioned and as identified, this is our required communications to you all as a governing body. We did have our formal exit conference on May 24th with management and a couple members of council. We're not allowed to have quorum at that time. That was for the exit conference. We've also met with finance committee last Monday on July 2nd to have this conversation, required communications with that committee, and then this is now our required communications under the New Mexico Audit Statute to the full governing body. Our required communications to you all under our generally accepted accounting auditing standards are to express and state that our audit was for the purpose of forming and rendering an opinion on the city's CAFR. We'll get into opinions and findings in a couple of slides. If there were any significant accounting policies, new policies, we'd be required to disclose and discuss those with you. There were none. There were no significant financial statement disclosures that we feel are more significant than any others. Any significant audit adjustments were required to discuss with you throughout the audit, which also pertained to the delay of our ability to complete the audit. There were numerous trial balances provided to us, which did result in multiple journal entries that were recorded and required additional test work from the very beginning of the audit, say about mid-September, throughout the end and final trial balance that was provided to us. As identified on the slide, we had approximately $49 million worth of entries that we had to record and ultimately test in our audit work. As far as past adjusting journal entries, a past entry means that it's not material, doesn't rise to the threshold that requires us to actually make the adjustment to change the numbers. We did have one past adjustment related to the city's Internal Service Fund for sick leave. We're going to revisit that during the FY '18 audit. That fund does not actually meet the definition of an internal service fund. It wasn't material enough to actually modify that presentation in this year's audit, but it will be revisited. But the impact of that past entry was the removal of approximately $184,000, which again is not reflected in the statements because it was passed, it was not actually recorded. But we're required to disclose that to you. Moving on to the next slide, pardon me, moving on to the next slide pertaining to judgments and estimates. Inherently, in any set of financial statements, there's going to be judgments and estimates because not every balance is going to be known at year-end. Included in the city's CAFR are estimates related to allowance for uncollectible accounts, useful lives related to capital assets, net pension liability, your self-insurance IBNR, that's those claims that are incurred but not reported, and compensated absences. All of these are reflected in your balances and based on estimates provided by management that we test, or provided by estimates and calculations provided by outside actuaries, specifically pertaining to your pension liability and IBNR that's calculated by outside On the next slide, I believe we should be on slide four now, regarding difficulties encountered in performing the audits. As identified in the finding that we'll get into shortly, and the reasons for the delay in this audit, the multiple trial balances, PBC is provided by client schedules that had to consistently change, impacted our audit work and really recreated, made us recreate and reperform much of the work that we had already done. So that was most of the difficulties, and a large play the factor in our, the delayed issuance with the audit report. We did not have any disagreements with management. To the best of our knowledge, management did not consult with any other accountants related to matters that we were discussing. It's not to say it's not allowed, simply that if there is discussion with other accountants or auditors, we'd want to ensure that they have the same facts and circumstances that we have. No discussions with management took place prior to the city engaging us as your auditors, and management did sign a representation letter. It is required that management sign a representation letter at the end of the audit stating that they have provided us everything that we've asked for, not withholding any information. I'm going to provide us updated facts and circumstances throughout our report date. Moving on to the next slide, we are on five now pertaining to the audit reports. We do render opinions on the balances and statements and disclosures in the city's CAFR. The opinion on our independent auditors' report, we do have a modified opinion related to capital assets. We'll discuss the finding in a minute. So modified opinion means, except for capital assets, all other balances, as we've identified, all other balances are given a clean opinion. That modification over capital assets is impacting many of your opinion units, which is not allowing us to give an unmodified or a clean opinion on the remaining opinion units in the city's CAFR. The city provided discussion analysis, management's discussion analysis, required supplementary information, and the introductory and statistical sections. We perform limited procedures over that, but we do not provide an opinion. And there are additional schedules that we provide in relation to opinion on those, meaning they support the balances on the statements. Now, as we move on to the findings, the other report that we include is our report over internal control and financial reporting. Part of our test work includes testing of the city's internal controls. While we don't provide an opinion on the city's effectiveness over internal controls, it's used as a basis for our audit test work. This report also identifies the findings that are included in the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. In this report, and included in the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs, which does begin on page 238, that's the hard copy, I don't have the PDF in front of me, so maybe add like 20 pages to that for your PDFs. But on a hard copy, page 238, begins your Schedule of Findings and Question Costs with a summary, and then the actual wording and language of the findings starts on page 239. We did issue the city three material weaknesses. The first one pertaining to the overall financial reporting and close process, as previously mentioned, the multiple trial balances, PBC schedules that consistently changed and required updated work, reperformance of work, journal entries that the city was providing that were not balancing, were clearly incorrect, that we had to then correct throughout our test work, led to that material weakness. It was quite a few matters that are all lumped into that financial statement, closed in reporting process, material weakness. The other material weakness, which does begin on hard copy, bottom of hard copy, page 244, pertains to accounts receivable. Because there are multiple issues with accounts receivable, subsidiary ledgers, manual reconciliations that were required and held outside subsidiary ledgers, we did pull this out as a separate finding and a separate. we did pull this out as a separate finding and a separate material weakness. The balances were quite large. We did identify an adjustment of approximately $1 million in the utility customer accounts billing where a customer's account was overstated by $1 million. So that's one of the entries that we did record. That's material enough to record. So multiple issues pertaining to accounts receivable. And then capital... Oh, I apologize. I skipped one. I jumped to three. So accounts receivable is the third one. Capital assets starts on the top of page 243. My apologies. Hard copy, page 243. And that is what's leading to the modified opinion over the opinion units that hold capital assets, largely related to the city's construction and process, process for tracking projects, inability. We could not test and fully follow projects through initial start of the project to the closeout of the project, to then close the project into a depreciable asset, to feel comfortable that those balances are stated in multiple places. Additionally, pertaining to capital assets, we did perform a physical observation. There were some assets that could not be located. And then city management, I mentioned previously, signed a representation letter. But that letter, we did have to remove the language related to management's valuation of impairment in of the city's capital assets. That's a required representation that we need management to include. So the fact that management would not sign a representation letter that stated management had reviewed assets for impairment, we weren't able to then include that, and that's part of this finding and part of the basis for the modified opinion. Capital assets and then accounts receivable. And then... So those are the material weaknesses. Moving on then, we do have three significant deficiencies. Those start on page 246. That's just a little bit less of a magnitude and definition of findings than a material weakness. So hard copy, page 246, we do start internal controls over information technology. As part of our audit, we do have a specialized information technology team that comes in and works directly with the city's IT team, tests and evaluates disaster recovery, change management, identified some significant deficiencies over lacking of audit trail and some lacking of some basic controls over the information technology processes. The other two... Pardon me. Pardon me. The other two significant deficiencies are federal findings during our test work over the city's federal audits and federal programs. We did have two findings, one related to cash management, lack of our ability to test and verify that there was a review process of draws and reimbursement requests as they were submitted to the federal government. The underlying documentation and support was fine. We didn't have any questions or concerns over the underlying documentation. Internal controls for federal documentation is very clear in that there needs to be evidence where we can test and verify that the documentation is reviewed. We just couldn't see that that was performed. We're not saying it wasn't done, simply that we couldn't tell that it was done. Allowable costs pertaining to payroll and non-payroll dispersments. Some of the programs that we tested, one program that we tested, pardon me, some of our dispersments for payroll and non-payroll did not appropriately meet the qualification for allowability to be charged to this program. They were largely for some benefits that really need to be charged as indirect costs rather than direct based on the documentation and circumstances for those. Those are the significant deficiencies. The remaining findings are all classified under the other section, Section 4, meaning that they pertain to instances of non-compliance, be it non-compliance with state statute, non-compliance with New Mexico State Audit Rule, non-compliance with the city's own internal policies or procedures, or other internal control weaknesses that are simply areas for improvement but don't rise to the level of a significant deficiency. The first one, and this is numbered as 2017-007, relates to the late submission of the audit. This is required, non-compliance for the state audit rule. Another finding, this is number eight, pertains to we had to do census data test work as part of the net pension liability. During that, we did identify a sample that didn't have the appropriate documentation for an employee being submitted to para. Cash collection procedures with the parking garage. A couple of times we left the garage where we weren't stopped, didn't have to pay. We brought that to the city's attention immediately, and then noticed afterwards we were stopped and that booth was manned every time after we brought that to the city's attention. So we appreciate that that was something that was taken quite seriously. Cash management and operation controls over the utility cash register reconciliation process and bank reconciliations. We are aware that the city is in process with creating cash handling or policy memo pertaining to over short draws in the utility drawers. So we did identify some issues with that, but we know that improvement is in place. Untimely completion of the Lodger's Tax Act. Again, this is just New Mexico State Statute requirement, a non-compliance finding. Lack of adherence to the city's own purchasing manual. Some required test work relates to procurement and purchasing where we have to test to ensure that all aspects of the city's internal policies are followed related to purchasing. And we did identify where there was a contract that didn't follow the appropriate internal policy. I believe that purchasing manual is also in the process of being reworked. I think that was also in process when we were, as we were here throughout the year. Control deficiency over our internal controls related to payroll, lack of documented review of a payroll timesheet. Again, we're not saying it wasn't reviewed, simply we couldn't see that it was reviewed, whereas the others we could. And then budgetary non-compliance is the last one. Required finding that we have to give in instances where actual expenditures exceed those that were budgeted throughout the year. So those are all of the findings that are included in the audit. The next slide is simply for your informational purposes pertaining to the definitions of the findings that we just went over. And then just the last report for your information that we do provide an opinion pertains to the federal awards, which I just went over, those federal findings that are included in that report. However, even with those findings, we did issue an unmodified opinion, that's clean opinion, so that's good, over the city's compliance with those federal programs. So those findings were not high enough that we felt we needed to modify our opinion over the city's adherence to its federal programs. So those are all of our required communications, and that is everything that I have for you, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Before we go to questions, Brad, did you have anything you wanted to add or comment on at this point?
At this time, no.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Ives?
Just one quick one, and this actually may be more for Brad, which is the last compliance and other matters item, which was 2006-006, which related to overage amounts being paid. Were those all corrected eventually with the fourth quarter bar?
Well, this is for 2017, and the answer is no. The reason being is that we have to have that fourth quarter bar done by July 31 and given to DFA by state statute. We're still making adjustments in August. And so, once we've, you know, turned into DFA, really there's, we don't go back and do bars to fix that. We will probably, you know, we've had this finding every year since 2006. And, you know, that's 12 years of the same finding, or 11 years of the same finding. And it's a structural issue we have because of the DFA reporting. We are going to try to find a way to make this finding go away. And if we have to do a bar, you know, in September to fix the previous fiscal year, then that may be what we have to do. But we will find some way to make this go away.
I appreciate that. I know we have talked about this before, which is why I simply asked. So I look forward to hearing the solution.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So is there a motion or discussion of the item? Move to approve. Okay, thank you. Please call the roll.
Yes. Counselor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vehil Copler?
Yes.
Counselor Viarial?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell? And Mayor Weber?
Yes, thank you.
Motion is approved.
Are there matters from the city manager?
Mayor, members of the council, this is going to be a very exciting time because I actually have two matters. So happy to share both of them with you. These should not be new to either of you, but just to, or these should not be new to any of you. Both items have communicated with you by email. Just want to make sure that you're kept up to date. The first is an organizational assessment that we'll be doing with Mr. Robert Garza. A preliminary schedule was sent out to you all. A few of you have communicated with Celeste on what needs to be changed, which we appreciate. We do want to get a finalized schedule out as soon as possible. So if it does not work with your schedule, please make sure Celeste knows so we can plan accordingly. And if we don't hear anything from you, and of course, we have to make last-second changes, we'll do what we got to do because it's very important for each one of you to be involved. The second update is about a project, again, that I sent emails to you all about, and that is the concept of early notification for agenda items on city council evenings. Again, this is a work in progress. This is not something that's happening, obviously didn't happen tonight. I don't even expect that it'll happen for next week. But the concept is to give us the opportunity to do three things. Use staff effectively, make sure that the people we have from the public are customers are more effectively and fairly treated when we know we can bring them in and we don't have to bring them in. And most importantly, to give you all an opportunity to get the best answers because I think if we know what's going to be brought up at council, we can make sure we have the right people in the room to answer the questions well. Again, I'm taking feedback on that. If it does happen, you will get very good communications from me in advance so you know when we're doing it, you know how we're doing it, and there'll be no question. I'll do it both in writing and verbally. So until you've heard from me definitively, we're going to give it a shot. Know that it's not happening, and we're still in feedback mode. So those are the two updates I have for now.
Thank you. Are there matters from the city attorney?
Mayor, members of the governing body, it's my recommendation that the governing body enter into executive session for two purposes. One, in accordance with the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, Section 10-15-H2, discussion regarding limited personnel matters, specifically the appointment of Yolanda Y. V. Hill as the city clerk. The second purpose for entering executive session, again, in accordance with the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, Section 10-15-1H8, would be for the discussion of the status of collective bargaining negotiations.
Counselor Lindell?
I move that the governing body go into executive session to discuss the matters listed on the agenda in accordance with the recommendation of the city attorney.
Counselor Vehil Copler?
Yes.
Counselor Viarial? Counselor Harris? Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell? Counselor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, I moved. Thank you. I moved to that the governing body come out of executive session stating for the record that the discussion in executive session was limited to the matters noted on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, that requires a roll call.
Yes. Councilor Villarreal.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Ives.
Yes.
Councilor Romero Wirth.
Yes.
Councilor Vialcopter.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Incumotion is approved.
All right, we have some business to do before we get to the evening session. So, item number 17, request for approval of appointment and professional services agreement for Yolanda Wyve the Hill as the city clerk. Are there, I guess we would entertain discussion before we have a motion? Or a motion then discussion?
To start the discussion, I would move to approve.
Second.
Now, yes, Councilor Ives.
And I do have a question, just because I've seen some information about the salary and percentage increases and those types of things. And I'm hoping you can clarify what the salary will be and what percentage increase is being spoken of here.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilor Ives, members of the council. So, the rate for the city clerk that's listed in her contract for this year is $100,500. So, how we got to that number was we took the previous year's salary and we added 2% upon that salary for this year's contract. That 2% was actually what was approved for all employees in the city through the budgeting process, of course, subject to negotiations for union members, but it's built into the contract for the city clerk.
Good. I appreciate that clarification again. I had read some other numbers, so just wanted to be sure that we had that firmly in hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Other questions? Please call the roll.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Ives.
Yes.
Councilor Romero Wirth.
Yes.
Councilor Vialcopter.
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We actually have no action on item 18 at this time. Are there matters from the city clerk?
I have none, thank you.
All right. Communications from the governing body. Carol, you want to start us? Or Mike, you want to go?
Yeah, real quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge that the Fourth of July celebration from the perspective of the adjoining neighborhoods, that's Navaa Day and Villa Sonata, was really a tremendous success. And I got a received, I asked and received a neighborhood pass, so I went in to Navaa Day, I went down the trail very close to the bridge that was being controlled by SFPD. And, you know, it really is a credit to Ray Sandoval, Sergeant Patty represented the SFPD in all the negotiations, Fire Marshal Gonzalez represented SFFD. So, really, early participation, clear communication of changes, which they did change the firing zone, and then effective implementation. And if you will bear with me for just one minute, I would like to let someone else speak for me. And this is a neighbor, this is Deborah Luke Scholl. "I was greatly impressed by the positive effect road closures had in curtailing public invasion, tailgate parties, and garbage. Also, the police presence on ATVs and the Arroyo and motorcycles on the trail really helped send a clear message of acceptable behavior and pathways through our neighborhood. I am grateful, very grateful, for everyone's time and dedication in meeting and planning for a safe Fourth of July holiday so close to our beautiful neighborhood of Navaa Day." Thank you very much. So, and this is actually, she was not the lone voice, and actually Ray Sandoval responded by simply saying, "Thank you so much for the feedback. So far, we've only heard positive things." And that's true, I've seen a lot of emails, and it worked very well. So, it's a credit to the neighbors and certainly staff and the Kiwanis to make it a success. So, I wanted people to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Now, Councilor Romero Wirth.
Okay, I just wanted to introduce a resolution tonight calling for a special municipal election to be held concurrently with the Santa Fe County general election on November 6th of this year, 2018. The purpose of, for the purpose of voting on a charter amendment opting the city into holding city elections in November of odd-numbered years.
Okay, do you want to, any further comment or just have that hold its place? Very good. And that's.
Then we'll.
Good, okay, thank you. Councilor Ives, for the good of the order?
I would just note that. Microphone, please. Thank you very much. I would note that I would join in Councilor Romero Wirth's item as well as the item you intend on introducing, Mr. Mayor, as well as the item that Councilor Villarreal intends on introducing.
Yeah, and if I, and I don't know if I can do this, but Councilor Lindell also wanted to be on this election item.
Thank you for noting it. Councilor Vialcopter, you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Working my way in.
The only thing I have is that, just to state that I've received some feedback about the restrooms at Fort Marcy Park during the Fuego games, lack thereof mostly, and I'm not sure why or how long these restrooms are going to be out of commission. And it seems to me that the city should probably do a little better, well, much better job at making sure we have those kinds of facilities because, you know, a lot of people come from not just Santa Fe, but from all over to these games, and I think it's a poor representation of who we are and what we offer. So, I would appreciate, Mr. City Manager, if you could look into what the status is of the restrooms. There may be some portables, but apparently they're not enough or they're not in sight. I'm not sure which. But some kind of communication to the public about when these will be done or what's the status, because I received this even inside, a note inside my newspaper this morning, as well as some emails. And it's always kind of something really easy, hopefully we can fix, and I would appreciate just getting some headway in there. Thank you.
Councilor Ives has a comment?
Just on that point, I actually did have a conversation with senior staff today, and the T-shirt that had been jammed into the bathroom, into the toilets, has been removed, so I believe the two restrooms that are permanently installed there are actually back up and operating. And I know the Parks Department is exploring, trying to ensure that the porta-potties, of which there are three, are cleaned in each instance no later than 24 hours after a particular game is held, so that they will be hopefully in much better shape. So, just, that's the information I got this afternoon, because like you, I had had a few of those questions come in, so.
Thank you. Councilor, you had a comment you wanted to add?
I just want to make sure that, do I need to, as part of my resolution, announce a public hearing as well?
Thank you, Councilor. We will be placing this on the next city council agenda, which is for July 25th, and that'll be for, just depending if we're going to do an ordinance, it's going to be for a request to publish. If it's going to be resolution, then we will have it on for possible action or moving to a committee. So, we will actually work through those.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we've done everything we need to do. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Villarreal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As well as Councilwoman Vialcopter, I've also expressed my concern. It was a while ago, and just the bathroom issue, I think we'll be able to take care of it, but it was, it's been an ongoing concern for us, so just thank you for bringing it up again. And then I'll be co-sponsoring the item that Councilwoman Romero Wirth introduced, and I will be introducing a resolution in support of the reauthorization of and full funding for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a resolution, oh, excuse me?
And I'd like to co-sponsor your resolution that you're going to talk about right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Resolution, putting the city firmly in opposition to the Trump administration's efforts to include a question regarding citizenship on the 2020 census. This has serious implications for the representation of Santa Fe and New Mexico in a large number of issues, including federal funding, congressional districting, and a variety of other matters that affect us directly. I attended the Immigration Committee last night just by way of comment to this resolution, and we continue to deal with, I think, serious matters of ICE enforcement in our community that's very upsetting to residents in Santa Fe. And this particular census approach that the federal government is taking or is proposing to be taken and which is being sued by numbers of parties, I think further exacerbates the problem. So, I will be asking our governing body to take a position on that, to put us on record as being opposed to that. I would also like to just second your comments, Councilor Harris, about the Fourth of July. We are such a lucky, fortunate city to go from the pancakes on the plaza and our friends at Rotary who produced and put on a remarkably fun event for families and, what's the, boys and girls, men and women of all ages. It was a remarkable community event. And then to go from that to the Kiwanis-sponsored and staged fireworks program later in the evening, which went off without a hitch despite the high winds that were a real concern. But the spirit of volunteerism that is so alive and well in Santa Fe is something I know we all, we all witness regularly when we go out to public events. know we all, we all witness regularly when we go out to public events, and we are all the beneficiaries of that. So I heartily second and concur with your thanks to the people who did such a great job on the Fourth of July.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would be remiss in congratulating the team that put on Pride Santa Fe. It was, I think it was really well done. There were a lot of activities, a lot of people on the plaza. I just heard a lot of good feedback, and I think the parade went smoothly, and so I also wanted to recognize the organizers for that, because it's a lot of work, and I think we will continue supporting that as something that the Santa Fe is proud to support. So I just want to give a shout out to the team, I want to say team, because it was a team that put that on.
Yeah, and that is another example. We had a string of, of events where the turnout was remarkable, the spirit was really, really positive, and the community was, was well-served by these volunteer efforts.
Yeah, I had...
Yes, sir.
Something to, you know, I wanted to remind people, and hopefully all the listeners, that there's really the first event to be held at the former campus of SFUAD, of what we're, people are generally referring to Midtown District. That's Saturday night, bring your grandparents to a movie, the first grandparents who show up get a free camping chair, but there's swing dance lessons that start at 6 o'clock. There's a whole host of activities between 6 and approximately 8:30, when Willy Wonka will be shown. This is an outdoor event, it'll be in the band shell, there's, I think it'll be a lot of fun. Councillor Veale-Copler and I will be there to welcome everybody, and so I hope we have a great turnout, and hope people can start to make use of, and really take advantage of, and see what's possible at this former campus, in this Midtown location.
Good call councillor. It's also part of the Southside Summer Series, and there was a showing of Jumanji at Swan Park, which had 300 people turn out to catch that film. So the, the numbers of ways that people are connecting with summer offerings, offerings of entertainment, fun, and, and a good atmosphere. You're really right to call that out, thank you. I believe that completes communications from the governing body, and we can now shift gears to our 7:08 evening session. And petitions from the floor. Let's begin, and let's offer people a two-minute opportunity to address their concerns to the governing body.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Linda Bunton, I live at 451 Avenue de Primera South in Santa Fe, New Mexico. I just would like to make a statement about Fourth of July. It was a lovely Fourth of July, great car show and all that, but I will have to say that the recycle people fell down on the job, unfortunately. There were stacks and stacks of cardboard boxes that were broken down, that people were having to step over to get to the cars. The location of this was at Marcy Street and Lincoln. There's an alley just before the driveway where the folk, the folk shop is, and I think that the restaurants had, you know, done their job of breaking things down and putting them in the streets, just assuming that they would have gotten picked up. And because it was Fourth of July, there must have been a miscommunication, and they did not get picked up. So before our next festivals, if someone could communicate that, it really looked kind of bad for our tourists. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to this petition. I would like to first address the minutes of the previous meeting from June 27th, where... My name is Nicoletta Monroe, 701 Dunlap. The previous petition on June 27th, page 21, there was an address that I noted of the Rail Yard Community Art Gallery, and it's 632 Agua Fria. Thank you. This evening, I'm presenting a petition concerning the College of Santa Fe. The topic of the petition is asset management in the case of the College of Santa Fe. Founded in 1859, originally St. Michael's College, the founding building still stands on Old Santa Fe Trail. The College of Santa Fe, presently located on St. Michael's Drive, is the oldest college in New Mexico. It received a charter in 1874. The city owns the current College of Santa Fe property, which requires 2.223000 per annum in debt obligation. The most cost-effective solution for the property is to preserve the school and reopen the College of Santa Fe with degrees in film writing and traditional subjects. The original College of Santa Fe has a stellar reputation. It changed when the school transformed in the year 2009 into the University of Art and Design as a for-profit technical school. The most cost-effective solution concerning the College of Santa Fe is preservation of the school, returning the College of Santa Fe to a private, traditional college.
Are you almost done?
I'm almost done. A traditional school with a bachelor's of art curriculum will return the most value to the city of Santa Fe. Preserving the college does not require hiring an architect. Preserving the college does not require demolishing a building. Instead, preserving the College of Santa Fe requires recognizing the value of academic tradition that founded the college. Reopening the College of Santa Fe serves the community and preserves a key asset. Please consider preserving the College of Santa Fe. A college is a possible solution in an economic plan for the College of Santa Fe in partnership with the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephanie Benanato, I wanted to thank Gil Rodriguez, who's a supervisor, I want to say he's with Public Works, but it was a sewer line that got broken when they were cleaning it, and the, where they had to come in was right at the box that is on my, is in the right-of-way, but it's my, it's landscaped by me. It was immediately destroyed, not that it was, I mean, it's just gravel and a lot of weed block, but Mr. Rodriguez came back the next day before noon and said, "We know we didn't return this the way it was, don't worry, within the month, we'll be back to do something." And by the way, there's another break just a little ways up on your, still on your right-of-way, so we're just going to do the whole thing." So I really appreciated that he took that responsibility, because I was like, "Oh, my gosh, am I going to have to put in a tour claim? Oh, my gosh." So that was really nice. I am still asking for a meeting with the new city attorney, and with, I guess, the city manager, maybe I will speak to him afterwards. I do believe that I can prove all of my claims, that is inverse condemnation, negligence, and public nuisance. I think I can prove those very easily, and I just think that, for whatever reason, the judge liked tall white men and didn't like small colored women, or women of color, excuse me. And I just want to point out another sort of unethical point within this lawsuit, which again, to me, is a reason not to go forward to stop paying Josh Harris money for doing unethical things. So in this thing you see here, excuse me, over here, you can see there's more of this drawing, and this was introduced as an exhibit at the trial. I had interviewed David Pike, and he started telling me that I had hired Drain Works to camera the clay drain, and that I knew it was clogged up in '05. That is an absolute lie. I'm not even going to say misrepresentation, just going to say it right out, a lie. Because I don't have any right to use that clay drain, I don't have any, it's not hardly on my property, and again, I never paid somebody to camera a drain that I don't even own. This is the only receipt that I have from Drain Works, it's from '04, not '05, as in his notes, and it is for fixing a sewer line, not cammering a clay drain. I know, because I asked for the complete drawing on this, that this is not the original report. They do not have the original report, because I asked for it in public records. And again, what I believe happened, and I think I can prove this, is that Josh Harris and David Pike decided that they could get away with making these kinds of misrepresentations. I told Mr. Harris that if he used this kind of material, that he would be suborning perjury. That put on him the responsibility to go look into this independently. He could have subpoenaed Drain Works to see if there was such a receipt. He chose not to do that. He's still trying to use this as if it's a true document. So again, that is why I think we are wasting city taxpayers' money...
Thank you.
...to Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councillors. My name is Douglas Johnson III, and I reside at 119 West Berger Street here in Santa Fe. And I am here again to request your leadership and get Santa Fe, not only as an example for the nation, but ahead of the curve for what is bound to happen, given the rapid proliferation of newly emboldened white supremacists who think it's cool to use police resources that are taxpayer-funded to enforce their racist agenda of removing people of color from their vicinity. There, every day, you can go on any social media platform and watch at least a dozen new videos of this kind of behavior, and it not only costs taxpayers' money for police to be tied up with these calls, it puts the public in danger because of, you know, the police are tied up on a 45-minute conversation with someone who needs to explain why they didn't wave at someone, and I think it's unfair, whether white supremacists are doing it, or if I were to do it. If I were to be angry, because I was at Fort Marcy and someone had potato salad with raisins and marshmallows in it, listening to Creed, I would be responsible, in my mind, to pay for the police resources, to not only waste those people's time, but taxpayer money. That's the big thing. We have to stop subsidizing racism. It's not fair for taxpayers to pay for these calls. The people guilty of these infractions should be paying for these calls, at a minimum, at face value of the police call itself. So I'm requesting once again that one of you take action, and among the, and I love the resolutions you introduced today, but I'm requesting that you immediately introduce an ordinance and get it on the ballot, if you need to, because I believe the community will support that. I really do. And Santa Fe certainly, once again, as we have with the sanctuary of the city, set an example for the nation to bring real justice to our communities. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, very well, thank you. We now have a public, we have any appointments that I'm not aware of?
We have none.
All right, in that case, let's move to public hearings. Request from Verde Food Company for a restaurant liquor license with on-premise consumption only.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. This request is coming to you from Verde Food Company. They do want a restaurant liquor license, which is also known as a beer and wine license, and will have on-premise consumption only. The location would be at 851 West San Mateo, Suite 7. The location is not within 300 feet of a church or a school. There are staff reports regarding litter noise and traffic in your packet. As a condition of doing business in the city, staff is recommending that this business be required to comply with all of the city's ordinances.
This is a public hearing. Are those wish, those here wish to be heard? And the applicant, if she wishes to be heard.
Stephanie Benanato, again, I'm just going to say that it would be really nice to have some kind of layered map here, showing all the uses, liquor uses, whether it's a beer and wine license, whether it's a whole, an outlet for off-premise consumption, whether it's just a bar without a restaurant. I would think that the city, given all the computer programs that it does have currently, would be able to pull that information out and actually make a map. And I would hope that one of you would request to have such a map made, say, within the next couple of weeks, maybe a month, so all of you could be looking at it every time somebody comes here and asks for yet another liquor license, or exception to serve alcohol, that you could actually just, again, have an idea of the kind of density of use for alcohol within our city. And I just want to point out, and I mean, I don't, I can't say that this person was under the influence of anything, but on my way here tonight, I was crossing Paseo, I was on Galistao, crossing Paseo on my bike. I had the green light, it had been green for a good block before I even got to the intersection on my bike. I was halfway across the intersection when somebody came flying through the red light on a blind curve, didn't even slow down. It was red, it had been red, it wasn't anywhere, you know what I mean? It had been, it was a dead red light. I was halfway through that intersection. Fortunately, I heard the car coming, I looked, I pulled back, and I didn't get hit. But again, let's look at what we're doing here, because we do have a lot of outlets for liquor, we have a huge DWI problem. And again, it just would be nice to know, if I'm walking down this street, I'm going to encounter 10 places. If I'm over on this part of the town, I'm, maybe there's one. I just think, again, it's very helpful in terms of distributing resources, and I don't think it's something that is really onerous for the city to create. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to be heard on this matter? Perhaps the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councillors. My name is Kelly E. Golf, I am the owner of Verde Food Company. We are best known for our cold-pressed juice blends. We've been in Santa Fe making organic cold-pressed juice for over four years, and we expanded into a cafe serving primarily lunch about two years ago. We've further expanded our cafe recently, serving a couple of different meals, Monday through Friday. We'd like to add beer and wine to our menu as well. We have lots of fitness facilities in the area, lots of yoga, students, for example, getting out of class at about 6 o'clock, or just wanting to be able to sit down and have a organic, beautiful salad for dinner and a glass of wine, or a local brewery, beer with their dinner, and Verde would like to be able to offer that in the area of Midtown. So we very much appreciate you hearing our petition today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? Councillor Ives?
Not so much a question or a comment, but I've certainly been to the facility, and I'm in, I'm in favor of this, so would move to approve.
Second? Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to say good luck with the next phase of your business, and also to let Ms. Benanato know that the Santa Fe Prevention Alliance has mapped out alcohol purveyors. I don't know how complete it is, but they've provided us with that resource in the past, so you may want to contact them, and they actually probably have a map available. Thank you.
Very good. Clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Councillor Veale-Copler?
Yes.
Councillor Villarreal?
Yes.
Councillor Harris?
Councillor Ives?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you, motion has been approved.
Thank you. Item two, under public hearings, a request from Zolo MGL Inc. for a restaurant liquor license, beer and wine, on... license, beer and wine, on-premise consumption only.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is coming to you from Zolo MGL Inc. and is requesting the issuance of a restaurant liquor license, beer and wine, with on-premise consumption only. It would be located at Isma Sushi Bar, 105 East Marcy Street. Location is not within 300 feet of a church or school. There are staff reports in your packet regarding litter noise and traffic. We do recommend, as a condition of doing business in the city, that this business is required to comply with all of the city's ordinances.
This being a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to be heard? The applicant wish to be heard? You're here. Would you like to say something to the governing body before we consider a motion, or you just want to see what we do? She's got confidence in this group. She has confidence in this group. All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
All right, I guess we're going to just roll with it. Could we please, speaking of roll with it, could we please call the roll?
Yes.
Counselor Viarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
Paid off for you. Good work. We come now to item number three. An ordinance authorizing the sale of approximately 0.059 acres of real property adjoining the northerly boundary of 436 Sarrios Road and 423 (425) Sandoval Street, and described as Tract C. Mr. O'Reilly?
Mayor, members of the council, this requested sale was approved conceptually by the Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee in 2016. It took a while for the applicant to get it together to get us an appraisal, which we got about three months ago. The sale price of the property is $85,000. That's $33.07 a square foot. And I would stand for any questions.
Counselor Harris, you have a question? No? Okay, I thought you were doing your math on the actual acreage, square dollar per acre of this transaction.
Actually, I didn't want to go on the record. It seems like...
I'll just give you a chance to demonstrate your math skills. Counselor Ives?
Would move to approve.
Ah, is there a second?
Excuse me, but it's a public hearing.
This being a public hearing, does anybody else wish to be heard? God, good work. Thank you for rescuing me from another parliamentarian faux pas.
Stephanie Benanato. It sounds like a very small piece of land. I'm assuming it's just something to make, to adjust a mistake or make something more regular. Be nice to know what it's really for, even though it happened and was approved a couple of years ago. $33.07 a square foot, I believe, at least on residential, but that would be commercial. The county assesses virtually any residential lot at about $75,000, and I think that's substantially $33.07 a square foot would be substantially over that. I think it's like 42,000 square feet or something like that. So probably for downtown real estate, it's probably pretty close. But if you look at the lot, there's a lot on Hillside, by the way. Not really sure how big it is, but it's in a condo development, and it looks like a fairly standard-sized lot. It's the asking price on that, $599,000 for the vacant piece of land in a condo association. So I guess you could do the math and see if it's equivalent. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ives?
Move to approve.
Second.
Very good.
Counselor Viarreal? Counselor Harris? Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Coppler?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
Thank you very much. That concludes our business for this evening. Oh, it doesn't quite conclude our business for this evening. Counselor Ives?
I would propose to make a motion to reconsider our minutes to add a correction to those minutes at page 21 under the comments of Nicoletta Monroe, where it references 1602 Aguafria, that it should state 632 Aguafria.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and do a roll call on this one.
Should we, or should we just do a voice vote? You instruct.
Because you're doing a reconsideration.
It's a reconsideration.
We'll do a... Counselor Harris? Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Coppler?
Yes.
Counselor Viarreal? Yes.
And Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask a question of the city attorney on this. Does the motion to reconsider need to be separate from the reapproval of the minutes with the correction being made?
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Parliamentarian, a quite subtle but accurate point, that there should be a motion to reconsider, then an actual reconsideration.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to amend the previously approved minutes to make the change that I noted in my motion for reconsideration.
Second.
Okay. Is this still, are we still roll calling?
Roll called.
Let's call the roll.
Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Coppler?
Yes.
Counselor Viarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Harris? Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Good work. Does that complete our business? In which case, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.